I am Jeffrey Turner. I'm the Chairman of Clayton County Board of Commissioners and I welcome you to our first, our first teleconference meeting in reference to the COVID response. You know, we are in unprecedented times and our citizens want to know what's going on, what the government is doing, and how to address their specific needs. This town hall meeting will do just that. This will only be the one, the first one in a number of town hall meetings that we have planned. So please, if you have somebody who is not aware of this meeting, call them, tell them to tune in. We are going to answer as many questions as we can, and those we can't, we will get back to you as soon as possible via email or some other social media outlet. But we have a number of questions that have been sent to us and we will try to get to as many as possible. Again, thank you for tuning in and at this time, I will turn it over to Valerie Fuller.
Good afternoon. I'm Valerie Fuller, the Communications Administrator for the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Today, we have seven panelists who will address four different categories in our town hall discussion. Our categories are public health, business, government, and we'll have a closing with the Chairman to address the faith-based community organizations. The first panel discussion will focus on public health, and at this time, I'd like to introduce or have the panelists introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Sudo Reddy. I am your Emergency Services Physician for Clayton County Fire and EMS.
Again, I am Jeffrey Turner. I am the Chairman of Clayton County Board of Commissioners as well as the Chairman of the Board of Health.
Good afternoon. My name is Landry Markison. I have the pleasure of serving as your Fire Chief, Director of Emergency Medical Services, and your Emergency Management Director.
So, our first public health question, how many confirmed cases have been reported in Clayton County?
So, as of a few minutes ago, 310 confirmed cases have been reported through the Department of Public Health, Georgia Department of Public Health, in Clayton County specifically.
Talk to us or answer the question, are we prepared to handle this pandemic medically?
So, we actually have a very unique situation here in Clayton County. The way that we are structured in the Fire and EMS service, we have access to nurse practitioners as well as my full-time, my full-time expertise, both as an emergency room physician, a EMS physician director, and as an epidemiologist. Medically, we are equipped to manage this in a way that is in real time, based on both the information that's out there, based on the number of cases, based on how this is affecting our population as well as what we're seeing in the hospitals. We are extremely equipped to handle this medically, and we are able to move in directions both from critical saturation to more chronic frontline care.
Testing locations. Can you talk about the confirmed testing locations? What are they or where are they?
So, right now in Clayton County, there is one specimen collection point which is over off of Mount Zion Boulevard that's being run by Clayton County Public Health. That satellite testing center is still by appointment only. Those are for people who have been through primary care or have been in consult with a physician, and based off of the symptoms that they are presenting or a high-risk exposure, they are being referred to that specimen collection site. So, at this point, still to be able to get to that site, you must have a referral from a physician to be able to get into that site.
So, there's been a lot of talk or questions surrounding the cost of a test. What does it actually cost to take a test?
The, um, the actual test and any care that is secondary to COVID-19 is not to cost the patient anything at this point based on federal mandates. There are additional services if you go to a doctor or a doctor's office that I cannot speak to, but the actual testing itself, if you are eligible for testing, is not a charge.
When you mentioned the word eligible, can you tell us who's eligible for a test?
Of course. Currently, the eligibility criteria as set by the CDC as well as Department of Public Health is certain categories. This includes symptoms such as fever, cough, shortness of breath, as well as comorbid conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, and other risk, um, risk comorbidities. There are also, there's also a risk category for exposure, those that are in high-risk exposure areas such as frontline workers, as well as family members of positive patients.
To assist our citizens and residents, can you advise, if someone suspects that they have the symptoms, what steps should they take?
So, the, the first step is that if you are not having acute shortness of breath, any kind of respiratory distress, I would ask you to use other resources, call your primary physician, call a nurse advice line, and stay at home until that can be handled. The safest thing for you as well as the community is to stay at home. Additional resources, if you are having those emergency symptoms, then 911 is absolutely the right thing to do.
We understand that nurse practitioners are playing a role also. Can you talk to us about the nurse practitioners?
Of course. The nurse practitioners at work with myself and under my direction are being trained to do multiple things. One of the things that we're looking at is to be able to do what's called treatment in place, and that is being able to come to your home and assess you, and give you the supportive treatments as well as any other information and care that we are able to do. Please note that this does not include testing at this time, as that is not available. However, in terms of symptomatic complaints and non-acute, non-emergent complaints, we are going to be attempting to manage that in your home.
What is the role of the Emergency Management Agency Director?
So, my role as Emergency Management Director for Clayton County is I'm in charge of overseeing the overall response to not only this pandemic, but anytime the county experiences some level of widespread emergency, whether it's man-made through hurricanes, tornadoes, earthquakes, or large-scale disasters that may be very large fires that encompass multiple structures. So, anytime the county reaches that level of emergency where we're having to coordinate multiple agencies within the county government, that falls up underneath the Office of Emergency Management and me as the Emergency Management Director. So, I'm a overall coordinating the county's overall response to the pandemic.
And Chief Markison, can you please speak to the staffing?
Absolutely. So, staffing right now, I'm glad that that's a question because one of the things I want to make sure I do is thank our frontline public safety personnel. Not only are they not calling in sick, but they're calling, asking what else they can do to help. We have, you know, some folk that have been out for numerous reasons that are calling saying, hey, how can I get back to work sooner? So, from a staffing standpoint, I know I've heard similar things from Chief Roberts out of Clayton County Police. From a staffing standpoint, we're doing good. You know, we have all of our frontline workers are here. All of our units are up and functioning. Call volume that existed prior to the pandemic is not suffering at all. So, a huge thank you to all of our frontline workers in the county for showing up and giving this thing 110%.
And let me just chime in right there as well to say that our public safety officials are doing a tremendous job. The Board of Commissioners could not be more happy with the response from the police, the sheriff, EMS, and even our healthcare providers. Everybody's showing up, they're giving it 110%. They truly care about this community. And when it comes to making sure that our people have what they need to be safe and efficient in their duties, the Board of Commissioners are making sure that we are providing those needs to all of our, our public safety officials. And our citizens are stepping up as well. I'd be remiss if I did not sit up here and thank our citizens who are calling every day saying, how can we help? Those organizations, nonprofit and even for-profit organizations want to know what can they do to help better protect and serve this community. So, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you to those that who are out there calling, who are showing their concern, and who are working with us each and every day through, through this pandemic.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. Can you please speak to the shelter in place?
Yes, the shelter place, actually, we have two that's in place as of right now. I have a shelter in place that I issued through the Board of Commissioners, which is set to expire on April 12th. The Governor has also issued a shelter in place that he just extended to go until April 30th. So, when you look at the shelter in place, basically it's saying that you need to stay at home. Unless you are essential or have essential business, you should not be out in the community. We want to make sure that you are in a position not to transmit this disease to your, your family, your loved ones, or anybody else within your circle. We want to make sure that we eradicate and get rid of this disease sooner than later. So, a shelter in place basically deals with making sure that you are being safe, that you're following the CDC guidelines, that you are following the shelter in place whether it's the county or the Governor's. But let me make one thing clear, the Governor's shelter in place supersedes the county's. Now, we can't be more strict or stringent than what the Governor puts out, but we can't address any need that is not covered on the local level that is, that Governor has in place. The Governor's shelter in place is statewide. The one we have in place that will expire on April 12th only deals specifically with unincorporated Clayton County. The cities have their own or they have none in place. So, just realize the fact that the shelter in place for unincorporated Clayton County is the one that was issued by myself and the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Let's talk about the supplies, supplies for first responders. Can you address that, Chief Markison?
Absolutely. So, throughout this event, we've, we've made absolutely sure that not only Clayton County's first responders are well taken care of, but our municipal first responders are being taken care of as well. Since this event started, the Office of Emergency Management, in close coordination with the Chairman's Office and the Board of Commissioners, has distributed well over 13,000 pieces of protection, personal protective equipment to our public safety officials. Like I said, that includes a lot of our municipal law enforcement officers who don't normally carry the level of protection that's required for this type of response. We've made absolutely sure that they have what they need to be safe as they are responding with EMS on a lot of these calls, and then to some of the calls that law enforcement responds to that maybe EMS does not, and we want to make sure they're protected as well. The past two weeks, we've spent doing nothing but sourcing additional PPE, working with the Office of Ms. Bivens and the CFO. She's been tremendous in her support, removing some, some obstacles out of our way so we can find the personal equipment we need and get it in. We're also doing some very innovative things. We recently just built 19 UV sanitation cabinets to reset, to sanitize our N95 mask so we can reuse them, and reuse them safely. So, we went out and found some unique supplies to be able to do that, and with the help of building and maintenance, we were able to build those cabinets. So, those will actually get out to our frontline people on Monday, and we can start sanitizing, which will help slow the burn rate of our PPE and make sure we can extend it throughout the event.
Okay. What are the county's urgent care and hospitals saying as far as bed capacity, testing, and their supply?
So, as far as the urgent cares, some urgent cares are doing testing, others are not. Really, it, what it boils down to is availability of the tests. As part of our coordinated effort, we work hand-in-hand with Southern Regional Medical Center, the CEO, Ms. Charlotte Dupre. She and I, and I know Dr. Reddy, speak daily, sometimes if not every couple days. We're currently working with them to get some emergency credentialing for some of our staff to be able to help with surge. Right now, Southern Regional is doing well. That's not to say they're not busy. They are slam-packed, but there is still some capacity. That's where, going back to what Dr. Reddy spoke about earlier, is, you know, if you're not experiencing those symptoms, or if you're experiencing something that would not normally prompt you to seek attention in a hospital, don't go now. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're reserving our, our hospital beds and our ER space for those true emergent patients, or those that are experiencing those, those emergencies. So, testing is still kind of sporadic right now. Southern Regional does have the capability, but once again, testing will only be made available if you have the symptoms. So, right now, there's not sufficient capacity to just test for the sake of testing if you don't have some kind of underlying symptom.
Talk to us about what we're doing to reconstitute government.
Well, we have, and I would like for Chief Markison to chime in as well, but we, when it comes to reconstituting government, we got to take it serious. We got to make sure that we don't come back in and re-affect anybody, our offices for say, or our buildings. So, we have a metrics that we have placed into, or put into place to make sure that we go, that we check each employee as they come back into the workspace. So, Chief, if you would, there's a number of check-off li, there's a check-off list that we will put each employee through prior to coming back into the workforce. Chief, can you expand on that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So, some of the things that we've worked with in consultation with Dr. Reddy and the COO's office is, there's a couple different levels. Right now, we're currently monitoring our essential staff. So, firefighter EMS workers that come on duty, they get screened every morning when they come in. I know Clayton County Police Department is doing something very similar, as is a lot of our municipal law enforcement and public safety officials. So, we've developed very easy, simple screening tools for all of our directors and supervisors to use that will help them screen those employees. We're asking them the same questions that any other healthcare provider is asking patients when they come in to see if they meet criteria to either be monitored at home, or if we need to try and get them set up and send them for testing. To go along with that, we've created an algorithm for our personnel to follow for who to notify if that happens, right down to, as the Chairman talked about, being able to decon our facilities and make sure they are cleaned. Prior to reconstituting the government, we've developed a plan to do a deep cleaning on all of the county's facilities to ensure that as they are brought back online, as our workforce comes back in, and more importantly, as our citizens come back into our facilities, that they are clean, and that we're making sure that all of our employees are scanned. And if they do have signs and symptoms, then they're being taken care of and tracked internally by Dr. Reddy and some staff that we have set up internally to make sure that we get them taken care of as well.
And the one thing that we do know is that we are going to get back to work. We, our government will be up and running 100%, hopefully sooner than later. And it's very important, it's real important for us as a governmental entity to make sure that our citizens, as well as our employees, are going to be safe as they return to the workplace, as they return to our facilities for use. So, we are going to make sure that our facilities are clean, so when our citizens, especially our citizens, come back to utilize that space, that they know that they will be safe.
So, as we move forward, we're ready to start our business segment, but before I move on to the next category, I would like to ask the panelists to please offer their closing remarks. Dr. Reddy?
Thank you. So, again, statement, my closing statement would be around taking care of yourself and taking care of others, following the recommendations of shelter in place, social separation, and personal hygiene, and if you are not sick, to please stay at home and, but utilize us as needed.
Yeah, orders, orders are issued for a reason, and guidelines. You look at what CDC has put out there, you look at the shelter in place orders, specific in, in guidelines in terms of what we should or should not be doing. If there's a gray area, then common sense should play a part in that. If you feel like you can't engage in activity without having an impact on somebody else, whether it's spreading an infection, or being in a place that would make you wonder, hey, could I get this COVID-19 by doing this activity? Don't do it. It's real simple. I prefer just to say, stay in place, stay at home, wash your hands, and be safe.
Thank you. I think for my closing statement, I would like to, to focus my, my message to the citizens, and that is this. Know that you are well protected by Clayton County Public Safety. The law enforcement officers we have in this community, the firefighters, the EMS workers, our frontline healthcare workers are among the best that the state certainly has to offer, and I would dare put them up against anybody in the country any day of the week. The decisions that this board has made over the last three or four years with the programs and the expansion of services and public safety, specifically speaking to our EMS expansion with the addition of Dr. Reddy as a full-time physician and epidemiologist, going back three years ago to when we hired our first nine, uh, first nine nurse practitioners. All of those decisions, we didn't know we would be facing this, but the vision and the foresight that this board had to allow us to expand that level of care in this community has paid great dividends. So, the citizens of this county can sleep good at night knowing that they are in very good hands. We've been prepared for this event, and we will continue to be prepared for it moving forward.
Thank you, Chief Markison, Dr. Reddy, and Chairman Turner. So, as we transition out, before we start, as we have our business panelists to, to move in, you guys can go ahead and disperse while they transition. Just want to remind everyone, a lot of people have been asking about updates and information, where they can find information. Please log on to our ClaytonCountyGA.gov website. We have a coronavirus link and tab that is available. We are issuing updates as they come, daily, sometimes hourly, but please let that be a source for information and accurate information as it's approved coming through our Joint Information Center and through the Office of the Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. So, if you have questions, just know that we are, while we may not be able to answer all the questions here in this live segment, we are going to have a frequently asked questions segment that will be available. So, as you're sending us questions and submitting questions or have submitted questions, even though they may not be able to be answered during the live segment, we will have a frequently asked questions segment that we will update frequently so that you can link to that and also share it to our community in form. So, thank you so much. So, as we move to our next category, which is business, I would like to have our panelists introduce themselves, and then we'll begin the questions. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Ben Casey. I'm the President and CEO of LTI Incorporated here in Clayton County, and I'm also the current Chairman of the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors.
Chairman Jeffrey Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
Good. My name's Larry Vincent, retired Georgia Power employee, and I am the Chairman of the Development Authority of Clayton County.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So, a lot of questions have been coming in for our business sector also. Will there be a meeting in regards to Clayton County residents or businesses being affected by the rising cases of the coronavirus?
Well, let me start by saying it's very important to us that we are, number one, transparent in everything that we do. Information is, is, is power. So, we need to make sure that our citizens and businesses alike are provided with as much information as to what the expectations are of our government as well as our business sector. And partnership is key as well. If they know what's going on, then they can know, they will know how they can best help the government, and the government can best help our business community and our residents. So, there has to be a clear line of communication. We got to make sure that we keep that open, and yes, we will try our best to have as many informative meetings, town hall meetings, or whatever we have to do to make sure we're putting out accurate and correct information.
What specifically is the Development Authority doing to address the needs of the community?
What we're doing, we've put together a four-pronged approach under the Clayton Strong Business Task Force banner. The first item would be a relief grant fund that we're putting in place. Second would be a training webinar to address the first question where we will bring in banking experts to address all those how-to granular questions by our business community. The third piece would be to make sure we communicate Clayton Strong. A lot of people don't know, we are feeding the world. The food plants that are here, those large logistics centers that are here are expanding and hiring people. We need to get that great news out about what Clayton County is doing. And the fourth prong there is what I call stewardship and communications. Whenever we get something at the Development Authority, I make sure we get it to the chamber so they can forward it to a broader base. I forward information to the Chief Operating Officer and various county departments to make sure we have a broad communication base of all these best practices and wonderful things that are going on across the nation and across our state.
So, how do eligible people or businesses apply for those particular grants? Is there a certain site or other resource site that they need to go to?
That is correct. We are developing it as we speak. As you can imagine, Development Authority Board got the vote on it, then we got to get it to the BOC because we just can't go out and operate something in the county without approval. But that is being worked on. We're also gonna, once we get it approved, get the application approved, it will be posted to the Invest Clayton website as where as, as well as the Clayton County website. So, it'll be open to all business, small and large businesses in the county.
Thank you. Would like to ask, what specifically is the Chamber of Commerce doing to support businesses during this time?
Absolutely. First and foremost, what our membership within the chamber has asked us to do even before the COVID-19 epidemic was to be a resource for businesses here in the county. So, while we are looking to our leadership for guidance as far as shelter in place, we have remained open. So, we can be contacted. We have a staff that's working from home that can continue to be a resource for our businesses and our membership, but also communicating things like today, making sure that our membership knows about the town hall, that they understand and what's happening at the SBDC through Clayton State, the Small Business Development Center, and opportunities that are out there for businesses, but mainly just to be a resource to know, just as Larry mentioned, through the Development Authority, that business is happening, and there's continuing to be open, these essential businesses, but also following the strict guidelines that the Governor, as well as our leadership, has communicated to us. So, continue to communicate, continue to be a resource for the needs of businesses in the county, because we are continuing to move forward, and businesses is, are continuing to, need to be communicated with. So, just being that, that open line of communication.
So, the question came in, what local plants and/or warehouses need help or are hiring? Have you had any businesses contact you and request specific help for hiring?
I can share with you, you can start with the Kroger's facility at Fort Gillum because just the demand on the Kroger food chain. They're, they need people. Various Amazon facilities across South Metro needs, need people. Publix, Walmart, Sam's, all our local large box retailers need folks, and we just need people to go there and apply for the jobs. They are there. You think about Clorox. Clorox is right there in Forest Park. They're providing the wipes, the sanitation wipes that have been exported around the globe right here, originating in Clayton County. So, large facilities like that, large company like that, they're hiring thousands, and you need to apply online to those corporate sites and, and get your name in the hopper and, and best wishes on getting a job there because that's a, a need there and demand.
I just echo Larry's comments. One of the things the chamber's doing is not only members of our board, but we've started there to just let, having videos on our website of what local businesses are doing, essential businesses that are remaining open or needing to remain open, and what they're doing to continue business in this. So, just communicating in, throughout the county of exactly what businesses are doing and how they're handling the epidemic. And that isn't, shows some opportunities, job opportunities throughout several, multiple businesses so that it's not just all bad news that we're hearing. There's a lot of good things, a lot of great things happening here in Clayton County through the business network. So, that, that, those are still opportunities that we want to continue to communicate.
So, some of the questions have come in from various types of businesses about what types of businesses are essential versus non-essentials. In other words, what should be open and what should be closed? Some of those examples would be a bonding company, a lawnmower service. Can you speak to those? Any of the panelists speak to that?
Well, essential businesses are those businesses that would deal with, with allowing people to, bonding companies, for example, lawn care companies. And the Governor has outlined specifically within his shelter in place, what is a central function. For us in Clayton County, of course, we're looking at those functions where people can operate safely and provide a service to the, to the county, to people, grocery stores. operate safely and provide a service to the county, to people, grocery stores. People gotta eat. Hair weave, barber shops, non-essential. And I hope everybody hears me. Those are non-essential businesses, simply because you cannot go into those places without somebody putting their hands on you. And that's how this virus is being transmitted. So, again, common sense should play a part in that. If you need, have a necessity for life, food, groceries, going to the bank, you know, doing stuff like that, those are essential functions. So, there needs to be a common sense factor that tells you that if I don't need to go to the grocery store for food, then maybe I should stay at home. But also, let me say that our parks, not our parks for say, but our trail system where people can get out and walk, it's also about remaining healthy. You know, you got to have a healthy state of mind as well as body. And we left our trails open for that very purpose, to make sure that people can at least get out, operate within a safe distance of one another, six feet or more. And the CDC has also said that if you go walking with a loved one, somebody who you're sharing your house with, then you don't need that separation, that distance and separation because you're already living with them. So, I encourage you to get out, walk, but do it safely, do it responsibly, and do it on a trail as opposed to congregating or walking with large crowds. But again, essential businesses are those businesses that need to be open for a purpose of serving people and making sure that they are receiving the necessities of life to carry them through this pandemic.
So, one of the important questions that came in referenced landlords as business owners. How are landlords and tenants acting or performing during this coronavirus pandemic? Meaning, can tenants be evicted? Is there anything in place for protection of landlords and the tenants?
That's a very good question. I might ask you to put a pin in that because we are fortunate enough to have today with us the Chief Magistrate Court Judge, Wanda Dallas, and she wrote an order to that effect, and she will be able to tell you specifically how that is being dealt with.
So, can any of the panelists speak to the federal government Coronavirus, Aid, Relief, and Economic Security or CARES Act?
I can. What the Development Authority is doing is part of one of our four-pronged approaches. We're going to set up this webinar to help, and we want to set it up to where it's going to be hands-on, step-by-step, how do you fill out that, I hear 31 pages of information to just help our businesses walk through it. We're trying to simplify this as much as possible. There's $376 billion waiting for us to get to, but in between our need and that money is a lot of paperwork. So, we're going to set that up and run, do this webinar for the business community of all Clayton, throughout Clayton County until this pandemic is over with, and we'll just keep working, sharing best practices from around metro Atlanta on how to do that fast, efficient, and effective.
I would just echo that as well, is just, we don't need to forget, and that's what the chamber's trying to do, we don't need to forget our local banks who are here to help us through that process. As business owners, there's a huge opportunity that we need to be taking advantage of to protect our businesses, and that is done through the federal government but through our local banks. So, I would say as webinars, as Larry mentioned, that we've had four just this week that we've tried to get our membership to be aware of, and that they're not only getting educated, but that we continue to be a resource through our multiple local banks here in the county to help businesses through this process.
So, is there a difference between nonprofit and for-profit businesses? Is there anything specific that you want to speak to or address for the nonprofits?
I haven't seen a whole lot on nonprofits.
I know there's opportunities there for nonprofits, and I would say, you know, absolutely check the chamber website, and if you still had questions after that, we would definitely get you in touch with the people that could best help and help you as quickly as possible as well.
Thank you so much. So, as we get ready to transition to our government sector, I'll ask our panelists to please move forward, and I'll ask for closing remarks for the business sector. Is there, what are your closing remarks?
My closing remarks, I'd like to echo what Chairman Turner said, and just thank the men and women that works every day to make us a great county to represent. The Development Authority is still open for business, continuing to do conference calls and conduct business on behalf of a county. We're still moving major projects forward, and just be careful, be safe, and we'll see you on the other side of this pandemic and help build a bigger, better county for everyone.
Thank you.
As far as the Clayton County Chamber is concerned, we want to continue to be a resource throughout, whether this is days, weeks, or another month. We want to make sure that businesses know that we're open and we're here to help them. But I also want to just thank the county leadership for continuing to keep business in mind and to understand that we will be a better community for this and will be better businesses, and we're excited to know that we have a support system in this county that thinks of businesses and the citizens as well. And so, I just appreciate the education that they're being able to give businesses and define some things that might not be understandable because we're all in this for the very first time together. So, thank you for building a community that looks out for each other, and again, the chamber is open for business as well. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Chairman Turner, as our two other panelists transition out, would you have some closing remarks that you'd like to make to the business community?
Yes, the one thing that we know for a certainty is that our small businesses are going to be greatly impacted because of the closure of businesses throughout our county, not only our county, but our state and our country. So, the information that we get that can help small businesses, rest assured that the chamber, between the chamber, the Development Authority, and your county government, we're going to make sure that we push out that information so our business, small business owners can tap into it and know what they can and cannot do in reference to trying to get some kind of stimulus relief. Also, going back to the essential functions of businesses, please go to our website where we also will have a link for the governor's shelter in place, between his shelter in place and the one we have established for Clayton County, they have a list of essential businesses attached to that. Now, if there's still a gray area, again, if you're not sure if your business is essential or not, you can call your local government, you can call the governor's office, and hopefully get the answers that you're looking for. Always err on the side of safety and make sure that you are doing all that you can do to protect not only your employees but yourself as an employer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I want to have the panelists for our government sector please introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon and thank you. Thank you so much for having this and holding this forum. It's important that our community understands what is happening right now and what they can do and what they cannot do. So, I'm Wanda Dallas, I'm your Chief Magistrate Court Judge for Clayton County Magistrate Court.
Good afternoon, my name is Terry Baskin. I am your Tax Commissioner here in Clayton County, and I too want to echo and thank you for the invitation to come to explain various things that's needed in this county.
And again, I'm Jeffrey Turner, Chairman of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and I just want to echo once again that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, this body, said that it's important for us to reach out to our community, to make sure that we are holding these town hall meetings to keep our community informed. So, I appreciate the support that my board gives me and making sure that we are doing all we can for the Clayton County citizens and businesses.
So, Chairman Turner, can you speak to the government shutdown, our offices throughout Clayton County that are shut down and what that means to citizens today?
Yes, when this pandemic hit, it was important that we stopped and slowed down the spread of this virus. So, as we issued a state of emergency, that we had to make sure that we, number one, everybody should be taking this serious. And when we issued a state of emergency that allowed us to be able to be eligible for federal funding so we can make sure that we receive funds to help us get the stuff that we, the things that we will need to, number one, keep our government moving, but number two, for the protection of those who are going to be out on the streets and working within buildings to keep the continuity of government going, that they're protected as well. Now, once we established what was essential and not essential, you know, we got to have the court system to a certain extent. We got to have jails operating, we got to have our police officers and police precincts operating. Those buildings and agencies have to remain open for the benefit, protection, and safety of our citizens. So, those automatically, common sense, has to be open. Those buildings and employees who could be, who could do their job and do it safely from the confines of their house, then that's where we want them to be operating. We have to think about their safety as well. So, when we thought about what buildings to close, who is essential and non-essential, then we got with each department head, they came up with a list of those essential employees as well as what operations we could do either remotely or had to be hands-on, and then we sent that list and information to our COO where we spoke about the necessity, and then we put it into play. So, we enacted upon what was the best practice, we acted upon what is the needs of our community, and we, most importantly, getting with our Emergency Management Director and make sure that we're doing things in a responsible way for the safety of our employees and citizens.
Does Clayton County have a curfew?
No. The curfew is the shelter in place. You're not supposed to be out, period, unless it's an essential function or need. If you have to take somebody to the medical doctor, if you have to go to buy some groceries, if you have a life-needed function or necessity, then yes, you're allowed to go and take care of yourself or a loved one. There is no curfew because the shelter in place, again, is very, very simplistic. Stay at home unless you have a need to go out.
So, let's talk about the court services. What services are open as essential, whether in person or virtually?
Okay, great. Let me give a little background if I could. So, basically, the courts of Georgia operate under the Supreme Court of Georgia, and Chief Justice Melton passed an order, an amended emergency order, basically saying that the courts have to be closed, and now the courts are closed until May 13th of 2020. However, the court is instructed to be open for essential matters, and this is what essential matters are: first appearance hearings, preliminary hearings, bond hearings, orders entering pleas, as well as the post-certified officers being able to do search warrants or arrest warrants, and protecting domestic violence victims. So, that would be a temporary protective order or restraining order, and these are the type of services that the court have to provide to the public that involve their right to be safe and protected, for the safety and the protection of the public. So, the court is, has adopted quickly a means to operate virtually on some levels to ensure that the public does have a right to certain services and certain hearings through the court.
So, let's address the protection in place for landlords and/or tenants.
Yes ma'am.
Can someone be evicted under this state of emergency or in the presence that we're talking about now?
No ma'am. So, what we did is we interpreted what was an essential matter, and basically all, now listen, anything that is civil or is a civil docket has been paused. So, dispossession is considered civil. So, people, landlords are still filing the dispossession, but our clerk is holding them. They are not serving the new dispossession petitions that they receive. They will not serve them until after the court has been open. And now again, that's been extended until June, until May 13th.
Okay, until May 13th. Thank you so much for addressing that question.
Yes ma'am.
We have many questions that have been coming in in reference to April tag renewals, paying and filing for homestead exemptions. Can you address what people can or cannot do in reference to renewing their tags or paying their tax bills?
Very good question, and I'll start with the tag issue. Right now, Clayton County has three locations that you can go to, and they're all in the Kroger Centers. Definitely one in Love Joy at Kroger on Terra Boulevard. The second location is in Rivendell in Kroger off of Highway 85. The third is located in Lake City, the Kroger Shopping Center, right there on Jonesboro Road. You can actually go in there, there's a kiosk in each location where you can go in and purchase your sticker that you can process from that point, and we'll retrieve that information later on. Now, pertaining to homesteads, right now, we're developing an app where they can actually go on the website and file their application for homestead. Definitely for anything to declare a value, you still have to go through that same process as far as picking up the information off the internet. Where am I talking about? You can go directly to the Clayton County Tax Commissioner's website, or you can go on Facebook where we're answering all questions pertaining to tag issues, registration, homestead exemption, you name it. Now, homestead exemptions deadline, along with mobile home tax payment, were due as of April 1st, but we had to do the due process of law by giving them the ample time to file it. So, we had to extend it to May 1st. But if we continue on, and we're right now in the process of analyzing and reviewing to see what the county is going to do, because if that takes place, we might have to extend that once again. We're not sure at this time, but please, if you would go to my website, you'll see updated information constantly and consistently to put the information out.
Mr. Baskin, can you give the locations of those three kiosks?
Absolutely. Once again, they're all in the Kroger Shopping Center. One is located in Love Joy off of Terra Boulevard. The second location is Rivendell Kroger Shopping Center off of Highway 85. And the third is located in Lake City, which is Kroger Shopping Center, once again, off of Jonesboro Road. And by the way, they are all open late till the store closes.
Our occupancy permit still being processed?
I'm not sure. I really can't answer that question. I know there are some inspections that are not going on, but that is something we will inquire into and post on our website.
In reference to the services for the courts and for the tax commissioner, is there anything specific that either taxpayers and/or citizens, the question was specifically for the courts, there are some virtual services that are being offered at this time. One was in reference to reporting to jail on the weekends. There are some people that report to jail specifically on the weekend. Can any of the panelists speak to that?
That's a sheriff's function whether or not he will allow that to continue. I'm not sure, and maybe the judge can expound on it, but if they send somebody to report to the jail, then I guess, working in conjunction with the sheriff, that they will allow that to happen, Judge.
And I agree. I believe that that would be something that a person would be placed on probation to have to continue as a condition of their probation, and they would have to continue to report to the jail on the weekends, if that's a condition of their probation.
With the shelter in place and with the essential work functions for employees, can you speak to whether or not the employee will need a letter, or how is that facilitated if I'm an essential employee and I'm traveling for work? How will I need to provide proof, if at all, for that?
Well, each law enforcement entity that's patrolling the streets is going to be left up to officer discretion at the end of the day. That officer will, I'm not, the government, Clayton County government is not saying that you will need a letter to accompany you as you go from your home to your work if you have, if your boss has deemed you as a necessary essential employee. So, therefore, what I would recommend is that if you are stopped, then you call your boss or somebody who can verify that you are operating legally within the shelter in place, but if you are in, if you have that big of an issue about it, you can ask your employer to write you a letter. Our county government employees who are essential, they know that they can call up here and get any kind of verification that they need in terms of whether or not they are essential personnel or not. So, it really is incumbent upon the employer, whether or not he or she would like to write a letter for their employees, but But at the end of the day also, each law enforcement officer, under their own discretion, should either take the person at the word, or at least go one step beyond that to call their place of employment to verify whether or not this person has a legitimate right to be out and about.
What's being done for our senior citizens?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but what's being done for our senior ci- citizens?
In reference to meals, um, we know the senior centers are not open, but what are we doing to help support our citizens?
Yes, the Meals on Wheels program is continuing. Uh, we are a little slow about delivering those meals simply because we don't, we don't have as many drivers operating on the streets. But at the same time, we know that our seniors are valuable to this community, and we're gonna do all that we can do. Uh, and I've received a number of calls from our seniors on a regular basis. They have concerns about what's going on in their community. So we are trying to make sure that we communicate to them what their county government is doing. We try to communicate out all the resources that's available to them as well. A lot of them, the only time a lot of our senior citi- citizens receive somebody company or a phone call is when we operate our Meals on Wheels program or go to the senior center. So, you know, depression is a real thing, and it sets in on a number of people, especially this time, during this time of a pandemic when you're isolated. So if, uh, one thing I would encourage those who are watching, reach out to your loved ones. Reach out to your family members and have them to reach out to your neighbors or anybody else, just to call somebody to say, hey, how are you doing? That could mean a world of difference to a senior especially. But we are going to make sure that when this pandemic is over, that the senior s- uh, centers are thoroughly clean, that they have a place to go back to, that we can establish some sense of normacy once again. But we all have to admit that since this pandemic has happened, it's gonna be a while before we get back to a sense of normacy, or we're gonna be dealing with a new normal. Absolutely. And when you look at also what's being done in the area of our seniors, the Atlanta Regional Commission also has a number of programs and funding that's gonna be, that's out there to help assist local governments with our senior population.
So we've answered many or much of our questions that was submitted, so, uh, moving into our closing remarks, I'd like to ask our panelists, is there anything else you'd like to share about the courts as well as the tax commissioner's office and services that are offered?
So I'll say this, that the courts have been open. There has been either a judge physically or virtually present every single day since this entire coronavirus pandemic hit. And it's, it's, it's really, it's an honor to serve now. And I, again, I wanna thank the chairman for your leadership and your vision and how you've worked with the court as closely as you have. And I do have to say that our Chief Judge, Geronda Carter of the Superior Court of Georgia, Superior Court of Clayton County, I should say, has been amazing in terms of, we've had conversations and text messages until ten, eleven o'clock at night to make sure that we understood what we're doing, how that we're on the same page, we're operating together in concert, and it's just a sense of pride to work in this county, to work with this, 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 the same, the people who have the same sense of service, the judges who are there, the staff that is there in the courthouse, to make sure that people have access to justice, because we can't forget that people are in jail. They need to have essential matters being held. We cannot close court, we cannot stop the court, we cannot stop the wheels of justice from churning. And we have to make sure that we don't lose sight of those people that are incarcerated, that are in jail, that deserve to have their, their day in court. So I'm just really, I wanna make sure that people, that the community understands this is something that we have, we've been continuing to do and will continue to make sure that they have access to justice.
Thank you, Judge.
Well, once again, I'd like to echo exactly what the Chief Magistrate said. Uh, Chief Chairman Turner, thank you so much for the invite, thank you so much for your leadership. And once again, I wanna have the public here in Clayton County to be reassured that we're here in the tax commissioner's office, working diligently to get everything processed. No, my office is closed, and I cannot open the office doors to the public at this present time until this is defeated. You must understand, the moment we do, we cause a big draw. So here's what I'll say. If there's any questions, if you need to contact the tax commissioner's office altogether, please utilize technology, go to the internet, go to our website. Please submit information, leave phone calls, we're calling you back. Uh, definitely go to my Facebook page, we're answering all pertinent information pertaining to homestead, mobile home payments, property taxes, tags, you name it, we're there for you. We're not, you're not alone. We just want you to understand, we're posting it daily, constantly and consistently to help you to be informed. So, in closing, I want to say this. Please, 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 please take this serious. This is not a joke. This is something that we were not prepared for, but guess what? We're gonna work this all through. As the Bible says, this too shall come to pass. So I want to echo from everybody on this panel, everybody here that's sending the message out, we're all in this together, that's why we're Clayton Strong.
That's right.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate all of our panelists that appeared, uh, before, um, during this, uh, town hall meeting. I know you have a lot to do, but just taking this hour out of your day to share with our citizens how important it is for us to abide by shelter in place, by abide, to abide by any order that's placed out there as for their safety and the safety of their families. And I appreciate all that all of our community partners are doing, coming together, working hard, and working to be Clayton Strong. But I wanna take this opportunity also, there's been a, to, to, talk about an issue. Well, it's not an issue, it's a question. A lot of people have been asking this question, and that is about hazardous duty pay for our employees. So I wanna try to be as clear and succinct as I can be in terms of what the Board of Commissioners are doing for our employees here in Clayton County. Now, we're playing semantics as well, because we don't use the word hazardous duty pay. We call it pay plus. And when you look at what pay plus is, if you have been deemed as an essential employee, which means you are operating or co- having to come to work to protect life and property, to make sure that our government continues to run, then you have been designated as being essential. Non-essential employees are not entitled to the pay plus. Essential employees are the only ones who get that, and those are the ones who come to work, that have to interact with the public, they have to go to people's houses to answer calls for service, or again, we have invaluable employees that we could not even do this, such as IT people, if they were not here to carry out that work. So basically what pay plus is, is that number one, they are receiving the ru- their normal pay, plus they are receiving one hour of annual leave for every hour they work. So if a person works every day, five days a week, eight hours a, a day, they are working a forty-hour work week, they will receive forty hours of annual leave. So I'm gonna give you an example using a police officer, a rookie police officer entry level who makes roughly about forty thousand. His hourly wage is roughly about twenty dollars an hour. So when you equate twenty dollars an hour to forty hours of work week, the value of that annual leave is eight hundred dollars. Now, you, if that person comes to work every day for a full month, they will receive annual leave value worth thirty-two hundred dollars. So then you say, okay, well, the cities and counties around the metro Atlanta area some are giving their employees five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollar payment, one-time payment, or monthly, that payment is being taxed. So realistically, that five hundred isn't five hundred, it's three fifty to maybe four hundred dollars is what they may be receiving. And I'm not scrutinizing those, those counties or agencies. I'm telling you what Clayton County's doing. When you look at a three fifty do- three hundred and fifty dollar check as opposed to annual leave with a face value of thirty-two hundred dollars a month, we are clearly doing more than any other city and county in the metro Atlanta area that I know of. I'm proud of the, uh, benefits package that we are giving our essential personnel, because it goes a long way. But you can't just stop there, because there's impact to everything that you do. If you wanna give five hundred dollars to all of our employees, it's gonna cost us roughly, uh, I would say about half million to a million dollars, uh, per month. We're in the middle of establishing and building or preparing our budget for twenty twenty-one. We already have a number of shortfalls that we have to deal with simply because of this pandemic. We're down in sales tax. Nobody's buying anything. Businesses are closed, our sales taxes are down, our TAVT, uh, tax are down, court fines are down, our alcohol excise tax are down. There are a number of lost revenue that we are missing out on. That has to be made up somewhere. We have to build a budget based on lost revenue, and we can't afford to continue to throw money out there. Our, our, our employees are very valuable to me. Well, and I say me, but the, the Board of Commissioners and, and everybody in this government know, I hope they know their value. But the one thing that I am trying not to compromise on is taking care of our employees. This pay plus annual leave is a great mechanism put in place where it does not impact dollar-wise our general fund. But when we look at the budget, one thing I wanna con- continue to do for our employees is to have some kind of COLA for them, a cost of living adjustment. We know that w- the economy is growing, the economy is go- uh, prices within the economy are going up, we have to keep pace. I'm trying my best to be able to have enough funds to continue to give a COLA. I wanna continue giving out merit increases, which is based on the performance evaluation of each employee. They deserve to be able to get a pay raise if they are doing their job and doing it efficiently. But we know we have to cut back because of the aforementioned loss of revenue, uh, functions or, or areas where we're losing revenue. We're gonna have to come back, cut back on some services, but the one thing I'm trying not to compromise on is the value of our employees. They deserve a COLA, they deserve a, uh, to continue to have a, a merit increase. Now, I'm not sitting here saying that at the end of the day, we might have to cut it, but I'm sitting here telling you today that the Board of Commissioners are very intentional and purposeful about taking care of our employees. And if we can just trim some of the fat, and it's very lean, I don't see a lot of fat anywhere. But if we can continue to take care of our employees and take care of them by giving them annual leave that they can take later on, now this is the benefit of the annual leave. They can take it when the pandemic dies down, and somebody asks me, well, when are they gonna be able to take annual leave? I was a police officer, we had plenty, w- we had, uh, shortages quite often, and I still was able to take annual leave. I still was able to take a vacation with my family. Every family, every situation is different. But I am confident that our, the people we have in place, our directors, our chiefs, value their employees and know that they, at the end of this pandemic, they're gonna need some downtime. So I know that they will work with our employees to make sure that they get, uh, some leave for a mental, for, for mental status of nothing else. And they know how we feel about being able, being able to spend time with their families. But as they accrue this leave, even if they save it, at the end of the day, when they retire, and they build up a substantial amount of sick leave, because your annual leave will roll over into your sick leave, you're only allowed to carry two hundred and fifty hours of annual leave, at the end of the year, it rolls over into your sick leave bank. So if somebody has twenty-four ye- years of service and they have to, or can retire with twenty-five years of service, and they have a year of sick leave saved up, they can use that sick leave to bridge their retirement, and they can leave a year earlier. That's the value of having sick leave to accrue, and you retain it, you don't lose nothing. You don't lose none of your leave, it's converted from annual leave to sick leave if you're over two hundred and fifty hours. It also helps with your pension. If you have two or three years of, of, of annual leave saved up or, or sick leave, then when you do leave, then that will give you extra money within your pension. Not to mention, if you leave before you even retire, you're gonna get a check for your unused annual leave hours. So there is a number of benefits that comes along with pay plus leave. And I wanted to make sure I put that out there, so everybody understands that we are doing something, in my opinion, that is a whole lot greater than other jurisdictions.
Chairman, can you speak to the May fourth date and the declaration you plan to send out?
Okay, the May fourth date is the declaration, uh, the state declaration of emergency. And within that document, I'm just extending the, uh, declaration or amended, the declaration to say that we are still in state of emergency and that we still need to be poised to receive federal and state funding. So let me make sure it, it's clear. Shelter in place, state of emergency is two different things. State of emergency is for us to be able to exercise our continuity of government plan, our emergency management plan, and the shelter in place is a guideline that says, hey, unless you have essential business or reasons to be out and about, you need to stay at home. That is to help slow down and hopefully prayer, prayerfully stop the spread of the coronavirus. But the state of emergency, uh, will be extended to May fourth, and the governor's, uh, shelter in place, which we probably will be operating under, is set to expire on March thirtieth. But during that week, between March thirtieth and when our employees, now all this is subject to change, but we're looking to hopefully have some sense of normacy back in order by Mar- by eight, uh, May fourth. And at that time, before that time, we're gonna make sure that we clean our facilities. We're gonna make sure that we do a thorough cleaning of our senior centers. When our employees and when the citizens start to repopulate our facilities, we want them to feel comfortable and know that we, the county government, has done all that we can do to make sure that they are safe.
So in our closing remarks, uh, Chairman, uh, I wanna thank, first of all, our panelists. Thank you for serving and thank you for answering our citizens' questions and for being here today. We thank you so much for everything that you do. Uh, Chairman, in your closing remarks, uh, if you will, you wanted to also address the, um, faith-based communities and organizations?
Yes, let me say this, we're coming up on Easter, and I am a God-fearing religious man. The one thing I am asking our faith-based community is to proceed with caution. The governor's executive order dealing with the shelter in place, as well as the shelter in place I put in place, uh, which is due to expire April twelfth at eleven fifty-nine PM, both of them are specific about the number of people that should be in any building at any given time, ten or less. Governor's order also says that if there is a gathering where people can exercise and be separated by six feet or more, then that is allowable. I'm asking our faith-based community to continue to be responsible, to, to know that this serious, that this virus is serious, this pandemic is ser- serious. The more people that are gathered together, whether six feet or not, The more people that are gathered together, whether it's six feet or not, in close quarters, is dangerous. Everybody wants to be able to go out and, and celebrate resurrection day. I'm one of them. But I'm asking you to livestream, I'm asking you to be cognizant of the fact that this virus can be spread, not only by sneezing and coughing, but as people talk in close quarters to one another. So this Sunday, I want you to be very cautious as to how you conduct your ser- your services. Know that if you need clarity, go to the governor's website and read what the governor has in terms of essential and non-essential, and what churches should be able to do. I am also extending our shelter in place to May fourth, as well as looking at any kind of way that we can do it and do it in a way that's not inconveniencing anybody, but we want to make sure that, well, this virus has inconvenience to all of us. So I'm not gonna say that. We have to make sure that we are on the same page and everybody understands what the executive orders say, and handle it ourselves accordingly. We are responsible for ourselves, and as leaders in the community, as leaders in the church, as leaders in the business world, we are responsible for the people who we serve. So, again, please, know what the order, the shelter in place order entails. Consider whether or not to have church service. And I know some people want to sit in the car and separate, but what I ask you in that respect is, if you have to, if you're si- if you got twenty, thirty cars out in the parking lot, yes, they're separated, but at some point in time, will somebody have to go get a drink of water? Will somebody have to use the restroom? They will get out of the car, go into the church, use the facility, and we know that the virus lasts on surfaces for hours, in some instances, days. Somebody else is gonna go right behind that person. We're gonna continue to spread this virus if we're not using caution and doing what is asked of us to do. So please, use caution, go to our website, claytoncountyga.gov, look up the governor's orders, look up Clayton County Shelter in Place, and know that we're only asking because we care. Thank you.
In closing, I want to give the three locations in Clayton County so that you can renew your tag. Those locations are Merchant Square Kroger at seventy-one twenty-five Georgia Highway eighty-five in Riverdale, Lovejoy Village Kroger at ten-three-seventy-five Tara Boulevard in Jonesboro, Georgia, and the Kroger at Lake City at fifty-six sixty-four Jonesboro Road, Lake City, Georgia. In closing, we also like to thank all of our panelists and all who participated and registered online to participate in our first engaged Clayton Town Hall meeting, and we look forward to having many more. As Chairman Turner has stated previously, please, please follow the updates at www.claytoncountyga.gov. Thank you.